Welcome everybody to our regular scheduled city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 2nd, 2014. We did get started a little bit late. It is 6:23 PM. And as always, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If rise, everybody please flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna have Sandy read the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And roll call, please.
Ryan Smith?
Here.
Steve Hackett?
Here.
Deb Fenske?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Alan Keeland?
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
John Lockwood?
Here.
Gillian Peterson?
Here.
And Eric Olson?
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Awesome. Consent agenda, we have no additional handouts. Are there any items that are on the consent agenda that any member of council or staff would like to see moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Lockwood, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Regular agenda, Sandy?
I have one handout. Under number nine, new business, letter A, a memo and bid tabulation was distributed for the Royalton Street Water Main project.
That's what?
Is there a second?
Yes.
And under number nine, new business, letter H, memo and information regarding the FY 2015 budget was distributed. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, with those two items, I do request, if you don't mind, everybody, when we get under new business, if we could move, uh, letter E, which is license report number 1246, if we could make that letter A under new business, and then move each of the other ones down. Everybody have any issues with that? Okay, with that and those two handouts that you received, we would need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Lockwood, second by Keeland, that we approve the regular agenda with those two additions and that one change under the new business. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Announcements and correspondence, um, we have public input. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the council and staff on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium and give your name and address for the record. Anybody that would like to give public input?
I have one issue. Do I have to go up there? Can I sit here?
No.
Um... Deb Fenske, 509 Westfold. Erin and I, we have talked about a situation down at the boat landing. And I have gotten numerous complaints since you and I spoke, so I would like to get this on the Park and Rec Board agenda for your next meeting to discuss this. This is also getting, um, kinda hot in the county also.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the county has a bigger problem than we do as far as safety, but yeah, the complaints are really coming in.
Sure, I can definitely add that to our board meeting next week. I did reach out to that individual. I believe it was a couple days after we spoke, told him the comments that you were getting, but we can definitely add that to the park board. If you've heard more complaints since then?
I have, yep, since then I have.
Okay.
And I know that the county has been, um, contacted, the sheriff's department has been contacted because there was almost an accident by the Red Mill.
Okay.
This is an individual company on city property and, um, using it as personal advertising, and people are not able to get to the boat landings. Like I said, there's a problem out on highway by the Red Mill where an individual was actually climbing over the guardrail to get out of the water and almost got hit.
You said it was on the street at that location, right?
Yeah, on the highway.
So would it, the county Parks and Rec Department was...
They've been notified about this. I don't know at this point what they're doing, but I'm gonna contact them and get on their agenda also.
Okay, yep, I will be sure to add that to the agenda.
It's something that council needs to be aware of, because I don't think we've had this problem before, where we have individual businesses that are watersports and taking advantage of this, these locations. And it just, I've been getting a lot of complaints about this.
Thanks, Deb. And Parks and Rec will discuss this, and I'm assuming we'll probably see something in the next month here. Erin, thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
Deb, thank you for bringing it forward. Anybody else for the public input? Okay, let's go right to new business then. And remember, we had changed the, um, agenda so that letter E, which is license report number 1246, uh, this is a temporary Class B retailer's license for the Wopaka area Chamber of Commerce, a business after five, and this is going to be held, this is the Wopaka Buyer's Guide. Terry Schultz from the Chamber is here tonight, if you have any questions. Um, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to take a look at it. Discussion.
I'll make a motion, we approve license report number 1246.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Lockwood, second by Keeland, that we approve license report number 1246, and this is for the Wopaka area Chamber of Commerce for their business after five, um, which is going to be held September 23rd, 2014, from 4:30 to 7:00 PM at the 600 Industrial Drive or the Wopaka Buyer's Guide property. Any discussion? I thought I'd give you some free advertising too, Terry. Yeah.
Are they selling beverages there?
Explain that, Sandy or Henry, again, to us why this is the license that they need for that, even though they're not selling it?
Well, I think providing it is termed selling it in, for the statute.
Okay, and they, this is open to the public too, right, Terry? So, or is it by invitation only?
Yeah.
So, do we need this license?
By invitation only. It's open to Chamber members, it's not open to the public.
And you're the nonprofit applying for it?
Correct. It's our event, they're hosting it.
Okay.
And they are not selling it, they'll be providing it to the people that attend.
All right, so we're looking at giving them a permit here, although I thought we had this discussion before, when it's a closed event like this, they didn't need a license for this, but as long as they're okay with applying for one, I guess we're okay with okaying it if we want to. But I think we probably need to have this discussion.
Well, I think, Mayor, it's probably erring on the side of caution, because let's say I'm a Chamber member, and I do business with somebody in Rapids, it's not a Chamber member. Is he an invited guest, she an invited guest, they're not actually a Chamber member, but they're with me, it's, I don't... But if you're on an agenda this to talk about further, so we have more direction of the staff?
Mayor, the difference on what you're talking about is if the Buyer's Guide was gonna have a party and was per guest only, they wouldn't even be in here.
Yeah.
This isn't the Buyer's Guide, this is Chamber, who is a nonprofit, putting on this at a location, and those people are providing alcohol. It's a little different than what you're talking about.
Okay, all right. I understand, I appreciate, okay. So you think that they should apply for it?
I think it's appropriate for them.
Okay, all right, that's all I need to know. Or we need to know. We need to know.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
And this might be a really dumb question, but to save us this discussion again, um, is there any way that the Chamber could get a blanket, um, permit to use for the whole year?
Well, I think you do know ahead of time too, don't you, usually?
Normally we do, not always. The business always, doesn't always tell us whether they wanna have it on premise or at an establishment, so...
Yeah.
We're not always absolutely positive until it gets closer to the date.
Henry, isn't there a limit to the number they can get? Any given?
No, that's only when there's wine.
Oh, I see.
The problem they get into is each, each event should be in a separate application. It's 10 bucks versus, if you did it all on one, I think each event is a separate.
Well, I know some might have offense and some might not, but, um, I mean, is it a hassle coming every time, or?
I'll do whatever you want me to, just so I can get the permit. I'm sorry.
Well, Deb, is this...
I'm not sure I quite understand the permit thing, but I'll do what the city tells me to do, so.
Well, I'm only asking you, Deb, this, because you brought that point up. Is this something that you wanna discuss further at another council meeting? Are you okay with the way it is right now? Oh, sure, yeah.
Any other members? Do we, I mean, we can, we can agenda this and discuss it at another meeting if you wanna put it, so that it's just one license report for the season, or the year.
Could we do that? I mean, is that gonna be a hassle for staff or for the Chamber? I just think because you guys have these regularly...
We do, we normally have one a month.
And you shouldn't have to come back every single month to do this, unless you wanna tell us this has changed. You know, we're not having it here, we're having it here. I don't, to me, that just seems like it's...
So what I'm hearing from you, Deb, is that you would like to discuss it more, I'm not sure the rest of the people will, but, and they might, but let's, let's put it on an agenda, either the next meeting or within the next couple meetings, Sandy?
And not just the Chamber, if there's another group out here, and I can't think of one off the top of my head, that does this, does something like that regularly, could they come and get one? Anyway, thank you, trying to make it easier for you.
All right, any further discussion? Again, we're voting on license report number 1246. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Thanks, Terry, good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we have, we're going back to letter A, Royalton Street Water Main Project Bid Award, and that's the handout that you received, one of the handouts you received tonight. John, eat a back.
Okay, um, yeah, we did, I did submit a handout, as the mayor said, this relates to the Water Main, Royalton Street Water Main project that we contracted with Omni Engineers to do design work on. We did complete that design work, we've submitted our DNR permit, we have a permit approval for, to proceed with this Water Main project. We did go out to bid, we sent out seven packets, we solicited seven firms with seven complete bid packages, we put that in the local paper, and we did open bids today, we received one bid. I think that it really relates to time of the year with contractors busy, but we did get, we did receive a bid by Wood Sewer and Excavating. They did identify completion date by October 31st. And just as a reminder, this is a 350-foot Water Main extension that will provide water service to three homes. Presently, these properties all have long services from the north side of Royalton Street to the south side of Royalton Street. One of those services failed this winter, and, um, taking in consideration the alignment of the Water Main out there, we felt it was really best to run a new main on the north side and connect those three homes to that, because they all are, the water services are in deteriorating condition, um, due to decay, metal fatigue, and we felt that it probably makes the most sense to extend this Water Main, and that's what we did proceed with the design on. This work again would be, right now, we have one home that is being served by a garden hose from their adjacent property, and that home has been served for months now, since this winter, since the middle of the winter. So we did try to proceed to get this design permitted and try to get this work done as soon as possible, and I, I appreciate, you know, the property owners, the neighbor that is borrowing the water and the neighbor that's receiving that water have been very patient and very much appreciate that. So we did, again, open bids, we received a bid by Wood Sewer for the amount of $41,130. It was a unit price bid, um, so with our quantities, the, that would be the amount, we did run an estimate on this, we were at $43,500. So the contract that came in is pretty close to what we experienced. We've had an excellent work experience with Wood Sewer, done several water and sewer projects with them, very good to work with, very knowledgeable, our crews worked very well with them, and we are recommending award tonight of this contract so that we can proceed and get this work done.
Okay, you've heard John's explanation, you have the memo in front of you, I know you just received it tonight, but he has been just talking about this for quite a few months here, so there isn't any other discussion, we could take a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the award for the Royalton Street Water Main project to Wood Sewer and Excavating Company for $41,130.
Second.
Motion by Lockwood, and a second by Hackett, to approve this Royalton Street Water Main project.
Question?
Yeah, Pete.
He said $41,130, and at the bottom of John's note, it says $41,300. Slight difference, not enough.
Yep, sorry, boss, a typo, I got the bid right here, so, take exact, the exact number.
Bid is $41,130.
$41,130. So that is, that, you're correct, it'd be $41,130.
That's not even transposing numbers, John.
I don't know, I cut and paste, I don't know how that happened.
Obviously not very well. Thanks, Pete, for seeing that. Okay, so it is $41,130, which is what John had said. Any other discussion on this? Any other discussion? If not, John, or Sandy will, call the roll. John, you can't call the roll.
Gillian Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
And Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, John. Okay, let's move on, and this is, uh, rental of a hangar space, number one, agreement between the City of Wopaka and Steve Levitsel. So we had an individual that has dropped as a rental, and Pete was able to find somebody immediately, so we're actually going without, we've had, um, rent that will continue. Any discussion on that, any comments?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by, I'm sorry, Keeland, that we approve the, the agreement between the City of Wopaka and Steve Levitsel for the rental of hangar space number one. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Gillian Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Uh, next then, this is Erin, letter C, we have Augie Austin Roof Project Bid Award, that does start on page 12 of your packet, electronic packet. Erin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As Mayor said, the memo does start on page 12 of the packet. We have talked about this, I know you guys have heard me for the last few months talk about this project, and it's kind of a unique situation in the fact that it's kind of tied to another project that we feel needs to be done in the recreation center, which would happen at a later date if this does get approved, that being the gym floor. As you can see in the memo, that we did get three bids coming in for this roofing project, and you can see right there, Commercial Roofing, Pioneer Roofing, Wyner Roofing, the lowest bid being $79,321. We did run into, I guess, a challenge here, and when I came with the quotes, I think it was the beginning of July, um, that we did get from Commercial Roofing, at that point, we were under the impression that, and when I say we, I will say I, was under the impression that a prevailing wage project, it did not, we did not pay prevailing wage unless it was over $100,000. It was brought to our attention by the consulting group that we're working with, that it is state law, it was passed in 2011, that all single trade projects, which this is, the limit on that is $48,000, so any project, single trade project over $48,000, we are required to pay prevailing wage. It does jump up to $100,000 for a multi-trade project, this is not a multi-trade project. So that did drive the cost up, our original estimates were around $68,000, we are now, as you can see, at 79,321. I did talk to our, the contractor from Commercial Roofing, the point person there, and he, I did ask exactly how much of that increase was from the prevailing wage law. He said about 90% of it. There was also a change in some sheet metal work on the roof that needed to be done, that he agrees with, with that product, but that, that accounted for about $1,000 of that increase. So, I guess we are, as staff, recommending that, that this roof gets done from Commercial, Commercial Roofing, for the amount of $79,321. Now, as, I do wanna explain one more thing, as we look into the bid tabulation there, you can see on page 13, you'll see three different tabulations. The second two are insulation per square foot, that would be, um, for insulation, that in case additional insulation is found, that was wet or damaged and needs to be replaced, that would be the price per square foot. Commercial is the cheapest on that, as well as their nailer per linear foot. Everyone did a evaluation of the roof, including Commercial Consultants Group, so we had four evaluations on the roof. None of them thought that we would need to add insulation or nailers, they did not think we would find any additional damage there that they do not, that they are not already accounting for. But those are what those numbers are, and Commercial Roofing is the lowest out of the three, for all three. Are there any questions regarding the bids, prevailing wage, or the work to be done?
So Erin, you're asking us to recommend Commercial Roofing, okay?
Correct.
At the price that, of $79,321, so if they do find issues with having to add insulation and the nailer, you would have to come back to council then? Is that the idea, or do you want some leeway here?
I guess I would prefer to have leeway. Every, everything additional would have to go through a change order, so I could come back to council with that. That would be no problem, we could do it like the South Park project, and anything additional, I could come back to council with, and that would be fine.
So if we do it as a change order, then basically, the project could still proceed, but you would come forward with a change order, and you'd have to justify that change order?
Correct.
I think the issue might be, is that they're up there doing the work, and they got the roof open.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
I think you might want to give Erin some leeway on that, because it may not, you may, they may not be able to close that roof up, wait two weeks for council action on that.
The roof, yeah, um, the roof is to be basically torn, if you look in the spec sheet, um, which I have here, and if anyone wants to see that, I can, it's a big book, it does say that the roof will be torn off and set back on, in the same day, at least that part of it. So, the idea is to not have that roof open, so to John's point, that would probably be...
Well, I think we're okay, as long as council understands that there's a possibility that there could be a change order coming, you know, if these things are found, and you said that you've had four different people up there, or four different businesses up there looking at it, and they don't see that as a problem?
Correct.
But if it does?
Right.
Are we okay with that?
Well, but if he comes back with a change order and we disapprove it, or don't vote for, you know, going forward, now he's sucking air, and the contractor's on the hook, so I don't think that's right. I think we should authorize some additional funding to cover that, that possibility.
Okay, okay. I'm okay with that too, but what, what, John, you're, and Brennan, you guys are more experienced in this probably, what do you, what do you think?
Well, I don't know, what is the...
The price per square foot for insulation is $2.25 per square foot, nailers is 75 cents per linear foot. The, the square footage is about, um, 19, oh, I don't wanna misspeak here, I don't wanna misspeak, I think it's 19,000 square feet, or, I'm sorry, 9,000, 9,600 square feet, I believe it is.
So you'd be, if you had to put in all, square feet you're talking?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so am I, am I right in saying that if, if you had to put in all insulation on there, you'd be talking like 20 grand?
I mean, you could authorize maybe half that amount or something, I mean, it would be...
If, if you had to put all, I know that they, they've taken numerous core samples, um, on the barrel part of the roof, all dry insulation, the wet part has been in those valley areas, so, right, 20,000, if you had to do all of it, I can tell you that all of it will not have to be done.
Okay.
I was gonna say 10% of the budget cost.
Yeah, 8,000.
Splitting here, okay.
So, what do you wanna use? Somebody wanna make a motion with a number in there?
Don't we already have a motion on the phone?
Do we?
No.
I don't think so.
No. They would make a motion to approve Commercial Roofing, um, for $79,321, authorizing up to 10% of that, excuse me, excuse me, 8,000, additional 8,000 for contingency.
Okay. A motion by Hagan?
Second.
Second by Keeland, that we approve of, uh, this contract with Commercial Roofing for an amount not to exceed $79,321, plus a contingency of $8,000 to cover any bad insulation or the use of nailer on this project. Again, you'll still have to come back with a change order, but that should cover it, if you're thinking.
Right.
Okay, any further discussion?
Are we okay budget-wise with that? I don't remember what we budgeted.
Is this part of the...
That's my question, we're, did we...
Is this part of the, of the capital funding?
So, yeah, so the, the plan is, is to pay this out of the reserves at this point, and then we would borrow, um, to replenish that, um, depending on, you know, what, we would take that out of the borrow that you guys would approve, is the way I understand it, and Gene, you can correct me if I'm not saying that right.
Well, we did, we did discuss this either back in Mayor June, and, and the, that's exactly what the plan was, it was at that time, is to use reserves at this time, and then you'll have to decide later if you wanna borrow to replenish those reserves. Okay? Any other discussion?
The other question I have is for personal information, what is prevailing wage compared to what wage? They normally pay their employees?
Right.
How do they come up with a prevailing wage?
Prevailing wage is set differently for, depending on what kinda contractor it is, whether it be plumbing, roofing, the state sets different wages for each contractor. What that is in this situation, I didn't look at the state wage determination, so I cannot tell you that exact one.
But the state does... But the state does, I have experience in this, but the state does set those pay rates for you. You have to follow those pay rates, but it also, not only includes pay rates, but it would also include an employee that you'd have to pay for their benefits too. So, I mean, if their pay rate is thirty dollars an hour and the prevailing, that would be the prevailing wage, and they said that there was also another seven dollars of benefits, even though they might not pay those employees, the seven dollars benefits, you still have to pay that amount to those employees. It's to protect the businesses that are, that are actually paying those benefits more than the wage is what they're looking at. Okay? Where's Mudnell on that? There is a, I think it's on page fourteen, if you want to, you see a better explanation of that, but, yeah, go ahead.
I was just curious, how, what assurances do we have that, that businesses actually pay their employees those?
They have to report it to the Department of Industry, Labor, and Work Development. So yes, they, and it, I mean, we get a worksheet back on that too. It shows that they did.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay, Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett. Eric Olson. Jillian Peterson. John Lockwood. Deb Fenske. Dave Peterson. Alan Keeland. Paul Mayo. Scott Pritchatsky. And Paul Hagan. Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, then you're all, good luck. Let's go to, I'm gonna skip this. This is letter D. This is an affidavit of correction out at Foxfire, John?
Okay, this relates to the plat for the Foxfire subdivision, and at the time, there was a, in the initial plat, there was a twenty-foot, a ten-foot on each side of the lot, Lot forty, forty-one, sanitary and water main easement. This was for the potential extension of those utilities, again, at a later date. However, when the, Henry, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the name of the development on Otter Drive, the senior apartment?
Well, that's a cap services project.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a name for the, but the cap services. The alignment actually between property, lots thirty-nine and forty was a more preferred route for a water main extension. Obviously, at the time of the plating for Foxfire in the eighties, I presume, or early nineties?
Very first time, yeah.
Yeah. You know, that was just put there as a potential use, where actually the alignment better suited the thirty-nine, forty. So you can see in two thousand and two, the city actually was granted utility easement between those lots, and that water main did extend to that development. So now, what we're looking for is the, what's called an affidavit, affidavit of correction, which will actually remove the proposed easement between lots forty and forty-one. This comes into play on side yard setbacks for buildings. Currently, this does require a ten-foot side yard setback, and if someone is to build a home, Brennan can probably address it. I think our side yard setback might be fifteen total with seven or eight, so you could go to seven or eight feet on a side yard, fifteen total between the homes. So it does affect, especially on these triangular lots, can affect setback and, and building location. So we're asking for action, and this is the proper means to do that would be approval of this affidavit, affidavit of correction.
John, can you answer, I mean, how did this come about?
How did this request come about?
Did it come from a property owner?
Yeah, the property, one of the property owners on forty or forty-one did request that. I think it might be for a lot sale, or, but it did come from one of those property owners.
Okay. I need to explain to council, since we have this, this is a conflict of interest for me. Lot forty is mine. So, and I knew nothing about it, so it must be the person from Lot forty-one.
It's either the, it's either the property owner or the agent is asking for.
But I didn't put anything there.
Yeah, it's either, it's either the property owner or the agent has brought forth the request, and it's, it's logical. We do not need that easement. And at the request, this was the proper way to vacate that.
Okay, so I don't know if this is necessary or not, but this needs to be signed? So I would assume then the council president needs to sign this?
I guess we'll ask Attorney Hart that question.
Yeah, yeah. Right, okay. Interesting. Interesting what you learn when you come to meetings.
I actually believe we're gonna have a house next to you, so.
Let's not get rid of it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that, that we approve of affidavit of correction to remove the twenty-foot sanitary sewer and water main easement affecting lots forty and forty-one of Foxfire Country Estates.
We have a motion by Lockwood, second by Fenske, that we approve of this affidavit of correction at, at the Foxfire County Estate.
I guess I have a small question, and that's, if you approve, eliminating that, do we have to approve approving between forty and thirty-nine?
That was actually granted in two thousand and two.
Okay.
Yeah, at, at the time, went through the process to get that granted to the city.
Okay, any other discussion? Sandy will call the roll?
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
And Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we have, thanks, John. We have license report number twelve forty-five. This is an operator or bartender's license. There are two individuals that are on here. I, we always have on here pending background check and chief's approval. Have those been done?
I couldn't, I don't know.
Okay, so we'll still make it pending that? All right. Anybody have any questions on them? Motion?
Move to approve license report number twelve forty-five, again, with chief's approval.
Motion by Kealan, second by Peterson, that we approve of license report number twelve forty-five with pending the background checks, chief's approval, and payment of any fines owed to the city. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Next, we have letter G. This is to change our November fourth, two thousand and fourteen council meeting to Wednesday, November fifth. Now, remember, our ordinance says that our meetings are to be held the first and third Tuesdays of, of each month, so you cannot hold a city council meeting on an election night, so we are asking that you change that meeting to, and I think it actually says that in our ordinance, that we would move it to the, to the next day then, if that does happen. We're just following our ordinance here.
Move to approve the change?
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Hagan, that we approve of the change of our November fourth city council meeting to November fifth, Wednesday, November fifth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, this is one of the, the next item is the handout that you just received tonight. And this is a fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget update from our city treasurer, Gene Peterson, and Henry Velikor. There is also something in your packet too, I'm sorry, on page twenty-five too on that.
Yeah, that was just meant to kind of give you a heads up that I was pulling some information together. Gene, please weigh in on this too, but just, you know, we're.
Don't just weigh in saying you've got fifty-eight days left.
Well, we initially had this date in our budget calendar. Kind of patterned this off the year before when we were in some more intense discussions the year before on the budgets, and it determined that we needed to have a kind of a separate meeting. After we looked at it, I would just kind of determine, I talked to the mayor, that maybe we didn't need to have a special meeting for next week, and try to condense it, because the budget, as it moves forward, will require some more work. But I just thought, since we had the meeting, I'd give you a quick update on a few things. Just a reminder in the calendar, at the October seventh council meeting, our outside agencies will be in, and for lack of a better word, that's what we call them. It'd be the fire, district ambulance, historical society, and our regional recycling commission. Under the expenses in the bottom, I did a cut and paste, John, and I didn't take this one out in the top, but anyways, we've gotten some indication that the ambulance service is gonna make some changes next year to service, services. We don't know the total impact of that. They did reach out to the mayor and had a discussion with him. We'll get those specifics on October seventh, so I would anticipate some, some change from where we're at this year with the ambulance. I don't know if it's gonna affect our appropriation to them, how much or what at this point. On October twenty-first council meeting, we would plan to present our budgets to you, and that would be a pretty full slate. We'd bring our utility budgets to you as well. And then November eighteenth, the way we have it scheduled, we'd have the public hearing and then the adoption of all the budgets. Now, I think you've got some flexibility, depending on how things are moving, maybe the water and sewer budgets get approved at that October twenty-first meeting. I mean, these are just general timelines. So as fast as you want to move, I think you've got the ability to do that. So that's sort of the, the calendar. Some things we know right now, we did get the notice on the net new construction. It's about two point two million. It's about, you know, one-half of one percent. Just to put this in perspective, I think we were at about two point three percent last year, so this is, is, is not as, not as large. All things being equal at our current mill rate, we'd be generating about twenty-two thousand in new revenue from that. Don't anticipate significant or any real changes to shared revenue. So stay level. Expenditure restraint, we've just been noticing a trend the last few years that our take on that has been going down, and more and more communities seem to qualify for it. Just to give you some perspective, I don't know, five years ago, we were at two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred, two thousand. This year, we're down to one forty-five. So as more, there's only a set pot of money in Madison, and as more and more communities qualify, that, we get a smaller piece of the pie. But we've been very successful with the, the intent of the expenditure restraint to keep our budgets below a certain percentage, so we qualify for that payment the next year. But I would anticipate some reduction in that. Good news, county library aides are up nine thousand?
I have more good news. It's actually fourteen thousand, three ninety-five with what share is shared too, so. Fourteen thousand, three ninety-five.
That's good news. And just a quick number here, it's charter cable franchise is about sixty thousand a year. I noticed a quarterly payment last year. It's based on their revenue from, from TV, but not internet. But there's, they must seem to, they might be having some more customer, because they got bigger revenues or up this last quarter. Saw a little bit bigger jump in the payment, it was about sixteen-five or so, sixteen-seven. So I, I, there's a possibility we can bump that franchise fee up a few thousand dollars. Again, until we get all the budget numbers in, and the departments have got them into Gene, you know, some budgets go up, some go down, and we gotta just look at it in totality. So these are just some quick things that popped up. On the expense side, there would be no increase in the health insurance premiums. The, is gonna be, there is gonna be a slight increase in our other insurances. COLA, at this point, the mayor's asked us to budget three percent pay increase for the general employees. On the police side, we are, we do have a contract with them through the end of two thousand and fifteen, and those wages are set. And you can see there that they'd get a lift of one percent on January one, and another lift on July one of one percent. So the effective increase would be one and a half percent to the patrol union. Retirement contribution is going down slightly for both the employer and the employee. It's not a big number. I, it may be twelve to fifteen hundred dollars is all, to the, to all the budgets for the, for the city. But it is going and trending in the right way. I think this last year, they do a five-year rolling calculation. I think we're in the, we're past that five-year period where, you know, we had the downturn. So things are, I think, looking better for retirement. At this point, we have a new personnel request in the police department, and, and the library has brought forward some increase in part-time wages. And then finally, as I mentioned before, there's probably gonna be some change in ambulance service. Don't know quite how that looks. Again, this is just a very quick, broad brush. We're putting all the budgets together. We will have in the budget, at this point, you did authorize the, a borrow of about a million dollars for projects for fourteen and fifteen, so we're working with our financial advisor to get that impact put into the budget, so you can see that as well. I don't know if you have any questions for Gene or I? I mean, it's, Gene or me, it's just a, just a very, very brief overview.
I do have one question on the charter franchise. Is there a sunset on that?
No, it's now a state franchise, and they basically are managing it. We've lost all local control of that bit, and that contract, and then they still pay us. But we just, you know, occasionally we get calls. And we really have all, no alternative but to refer them to the state agency that's managing it.
Okay. Any other questions? Communications recommendations of the mayor, just a couple of things I wanted to ask. Council, I don't know how many of you people get the, the monthly book that comes out from the League of Municipalities, but it's called the municipality, but they do have under, on their discussion, under closed sessions, under Wisconsin open meetings law, and that that comes along with what Dennis said today. I don't know, is council have any interest in having him come back or having, I didn't know if he said he comes back for that, or, or not to discuss this? I know, for you old timers on council, it was a few years ago that we actually had, it was a Madison professor, what was his name? I can't remember his name, but came up here and did our, one of these to just help us out, requirements that you needed. Again, any interest in that? If, if you do, just give me an, shoot me an email, and we'll, if, if we have enough interest, we'll, we'll get something set up for that. Couple other things, Pete Anderson, I don't think he emailed everybody, but he has been requested to go to the county board meeting, and maybe we're being a little presumptuous here, but it's possible that we might get some. They used to, but the county used to budget some money for county airports, and we're hoping that that's what they want him to come for, is that they're going to at least listen to his discussion and maybe reinstate those dollar amounts, or some of that. So, he's going to be meeting with them, I think, the first week in October. So that's good news. As Henry said in his, in his memo to you, if you were following the budget agenda or meetings, you, there is no meeting at all next week. Okay? So next Tuesday, we did have a, a budget meeting set, and we will not have that meeting. Some of you might be asking about the finance director, where we're at. We are down to the point where we have a individual that we have. a individual that we have offered the job to, of course, pending background checks and so forth and council approval, so expect to meet this person at the September sixteenth, which would be our next city council meeting. Expect to meet them, meet this individual and, and you, obviously, we'll have the ability to ask questions and find out more about them. And hopefully, you will have enough knowledge of them that you will be able to vote on it, because we do want to get this person in place before Gene leaves. So we want to give her at least what?
Three weeks.
This person three weeks with, with Gene. So hopefully that works out. Just a reminder to you, and, and I could probably do this at the next meeting too, but that October seventh meeting that Henry was talking about, we probably will have, if we don't just have the township chairs from the town of Lynn, we'll pack Farmington and Dayton, we might have all of them here, you know, all of their members of their board, because we do have outside agencies that are making presentations, notably the Gold Cross and we not only have to vote on that Gold Cross contract, but they also have to agree to that contract, as well as they have to agree to the fire district contract and the recycling district contract too. And so we are inviting them to that meeting so that one presentation can be made from each one of those organizations. I can't tell you about Gold Cross and we didn't want to get into too much detail on it, but we are looking at probably an increase to our, our cost to Gold Cross. But they have a couple of options for us and, and there might not be an, the option is, is to look at a different service agreement that we have with them right now or keep the current service agreement that we have and they would need to increase their prices to be able to continue that, so they, they have some pretty good answers on it, but I'll let you hear it from them directly and they, and they will have two individuals here to discuss that with you. Anything else for the good of the council? Anybody? Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Kealan, second by Lockwood, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is September sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen at six P M. Subject of call. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We are adjourned at seven fifteen P M. Thanks, everybody.